Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the April eighth twenty twenty five meeting of the town board of the town of Newcastle. The board has been an executive session and I would now like to ask for motion to open the work sessions.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Aye. Hi.
Okay, thank you and welcome everybody. Uh we are going to start off our work session with the discussion of a proposal for the town code amendment to the M F R.
Yeah.
Can I just say a little bit?
Um sorry, there's there's some noise outside so we're going to interrupt for a moment. Okay, so we're going to begin with a discussion on a town on the proposal for town code amendment for the M F R dash C density incentive and other zoning requirements. And um this discussion will be based on a proposal brought to us by our director of planning Sabrina Charney-Ho. And um so my understanding is that the intent behind the proposal is to um to fix some discrepancies between the text and the chart in the law and to um to uh fix some inconsistencies. So Sabrina, could you please explain, you know, the purpose and how the language accomplishes that purpose?
Sure, so good evening everyone.
Um.
Um within the town code today, there are two um multifamily districts, one for the Chapua hamlet and one for the Millwood hamlet. Within the provisions in the Chapua hamlet, there is a list of what's called density incentives. So if you do certain things or you provide certain things that the town has deemed worthy of increasing your density, then you can increase your density. You cannot exceed the height limitations, you cannot ex- you know um uh you can you must meet parking requirements, you must meet stormwater requirements. But the density incentives as they are written are very confusing and it is if when they were written, they weren't thought out properly to really make them function the way they're supposed to function as far as increasing somebody's ability to put a higher density of units. So instead of um two units, if you do certain things, you make them handicapped accessible, you rent them instead of owner uh require ownership to them, you can increase your density no more than one hundred percent. So you could put two additional units on the property, but you can't go higher than what you can have by without the incentive. So there's provisions within this code to restrain the developments on the site, but there's clarifications uh needed to allow the incentives to function as they were intended. In addition, there's conflicts within the code. One section of the codes uh requires, for example, coverage limitations. Another section of that same code says there are no coverage requirements. There is also a fifty foot front yard setback required within the M F R C district, which brings anything developed under this code out of character with the existing street wall in the Chapua hamlet. So there's some ju- suggestions to change that to zero to be consistent with the existing footprint of or the street wall of the buildings within the Chapua hamlet. So in my write-up to you um and and council has helped me with this, um we've actually taken the chapter of the code and clarified with strikeouts and added language as well as a calculation table column to show how an incentive would be applied. Um and there's really one, two, three, there's one, two, three, four, five, six incentives that require editing. One of those uh due to a legislative change that the town board made in twenty twenty two, you required in all commercial districts residential housing to have a ten percent minimum A F F H requirement. That previously was an incentive under the M F R C, so we struck that from the incentive table and we actually incentiv- incentivized additional A F F H requirement. So if you wanted to provide fifteen percent instead of the ten percent, you would get a measure of density bonus. So yeah, I don't know if you want it.
So then, oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't know.
When 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 was it originally drafted, if you know?
I wanna say the original law was drafted in the late nineteen nineties.
Either way, long time ago.
Okay.
A while ago, yes.
So I I guess one of my first questions is um so what what prompted the the review of, I mean, do we have something
There have been sev-
not of indication that someone wants to develop a new property?
Yeah, there have Yeah, there have been several indications from various property owners in the hamlet that have tried that have come in wanting to use these incentives. And when I sit down and try to confirm the math in every single instance, I can run it a different way based on the way this is written and making assumptions that I am not comfortable to make. And so the changes that are being proposed provide a more prescriptive procedure as to how to apply the incentives.
Okay, so one of the things that I understood, I mean, we had a a very brief discussion about the the goal of this is my understanding was that there would not be an increase in density. But um as I look at this more closely, I have uh some questions about that.
Sure.
And so
It's not an increase in density based on what is existing,
the
what is allowed i- in the code today, right? This is not a new density provision, these density provisions have been within the code.
Well wait, because the fifty to zero would be a change, right?
Yes, but that's not a density change, that's a location of the building on the property, about the lot coverage.
Right, okay. But that that's a that's a different issue, I mean, I mean, I have questions about that too, but I just wanna stick with the density first.
Sure.
So I'm looking at the first incentive feature which is um which is adding units for uh for low to moderate for low to moderate income families.
Yep, additionally.
So we wanna incentivize that.
Mm-hmm.
So the old language had it it certainly is ambiguous, the current language is certainly ambiguous. But um my question about the new language is is that it doesn't contain a maximum in the way that the old language did. The old, well, I shouldn't say the old language, it's the current language, which increases, tell me if if this is correct, the the current language increases
So it
Go ahead.
the density by two percent for each one percent of
Up to a maximum of thirty percent for one percent.
a diff- One percent of an increase in units or square footage?
Yeah, to be for your determination, that is the wrong
Yeah.
So, no, I'm I'm asking about the current language.
Yes, and I'm telling you right now, I can run it three ways.
But that's that is part, so it that that is part of the lack of clarity there, we don't know, we don't know what it's saying.
Correct, no. I don't know if it's just about the units based on the base permitted density or if it's based on the square footage of the permitted density.
I see that. So now, but that current language does have a maximum, whatever it might mean, it does say up to a maximum
An increase up to fifty percent.
up to a maximum total increase of fifty percent. Now, the proposed language doesn't have a maximum total. So correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I'm reading it is that you could increase the density in perpetuity. There is no, there's no maximum.
You in the in the rest of the code, there are limitations. You can't increase your density more than a hundred percent of what your existing density is. So if you if if you can buy right without any incentive, put two units on a property, you can only put two more units on that property.
So this language doesn't state that, but you're saying that those
There's other provisions within the M F R C code, there's other requirements.
It's elsewhere.
I didn't give you the whole code here, this is just a section we were reading.
Right, but I I don't like to see sections that present inconsistencies or ambiguities. So I would like somehow for the language to indicate that there is a maximum and what that might be.
Well, I I we can we can do a circular reference back to the provision in this code
Yes, yes.
where it says you cannot increase your density beyond one hundred percent of what is your base density.
Okay.
No problem, and we can we can actually include that as a statement under um A where it talks about um the incentives, we can put a provision in the table that says these den- you know, density in any event cannot be increased beyond what is allowed in section such as such of this section.
Yes, I'd like to see that.
Okay, we can definitely add that.
So there's no way for us to tell whether the proposed language increases the density more than the current language?
It doesn't.
But we can't tell what the current language is is providing, I mean, we we can't we can't calculate it.
Well, 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 again, we can't. No, I can't.
So, okay, so we're basically starting anew here.
In some instances, in some in-
Yeah, because we can't tell what the current language is is requiring.
Correct, yeah.
So I I just wanna make clear what we're actually doing. So we
Okay, so so in let's we can go through each of the incentives, cuz they're different.
We're not Yeah.
So incentive one, I could not calculate fairly for an applicant because I could calculate this several different ways given the way it is written exist- existing. So we decided on looking at it as a whole saying fifteen percent, a a fifteen percent increase in density for an additional ten percent of units calculated and you base that on the lot size. So if you have ten thousand square feet, not even, you if you have eight thousand square feet, if you provide if you can put two units on that eight thousand square feet, then or you can put one and a half units on that eight seven thousand square feet because you can't take advantage given the size limitations of the units that are in this section of the code. If you get an additional ten, if you get if you get an additional fifteen percent density increase, then on that eight thousand, you add fifteen percent to get two units instead of the one and a half units.
But you still can't go up beyond what the c- code
You can't go beyond two units.
Right, we're gonna cross-reference
Yes.
to make sure that that that's very clear.
Correct. Yes.
Um also, I wanna point out that we are making some value judgments here because the the percentage is different for senior citizen apartments
Correct.
than it is for low to moderate income apartments.
And those, correct, and those 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 differences we're looking at the way that the percentages were written in the code today and extrapolating. For senior citizen apartments in the existing code, it's one per cent percent for each two percent, right? So if you had two units and one percent of those two units was gonna be senior, that's that's fifty percent of your two units.
So you're you're just
So I made it twenty per-
You're making it higher because this one, because the current language
Said it was
as I'm clear as it is, is also making art, but it's a policy decision and
the the Correct. It is, you may decide you only want it to be ten percent.
And so we can Right, and 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 just to be clear, I don't think we're anywhere near ready to bring this to public hearing because there's a lot, there's more to think about than than meets the eye.
Yeah, you need to feel comfortable. Absolutely.
So we really need to think about this and do we want to give less incentive for low to moderate income families than senior citizens? Or or do we wanna give them the same kind of incentive?
Don't
So it's a policy decision that
Yeah. are in the before we even start to move on to the policy decision.
Well, I I think that we've already seen that the current language is pretty much indecipherable. We can't so you know, we we can't make, uh as Sabrina told us, we can't really calculate it accurately.
Just like Right, but but I'd kinda like to go line, you know, I'd like to know each of the specific ones, you know, if we're just looking at number one,
Specifically
you know, and they may all have different types of consistency.
Right, we're looking at number two now because we, you know, we s- we see that
Oh, then I have a question on number one.
Oh, okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah.
Uh it does the code define low to moderate low slash moderate income families?
It does in relation to your A F F H sections of the code.
Okay, I mean, this is a place where I would say that it language probably inconsistent as well.
E- exactly, yeah, I exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we should put A F F H.
Well, we would go back to the code and cite that section of the code where it talks about the definition, it's not strictly A F F H.
Okay.
Sabrina, can you give me some information about what projects specifically?
I'd rather not mention the projects, I can tell you that there's at least four projects throughout the hamlet, property owners
Currently?
currently, property owners who've come in wanting to apply these density incentives.
They they haven't made formal submitted formal applications, so we we wouldn't
No, they have not. They have not submitted formal applications, this is all asking what they can and cannot do.
Right.
And that's where you're finding the difficulty.
Well, and I that's, yeah, I could because they come in, you know, a lot of we have what's called a pre-application meeting in my office before you come to the planning board with a pre- you know, in a meeting for subdivision or site plan. And most lo- most most often in the hamlet, it's a site plan because there's not a lot of subdivisions occurring. We conduct pre-application meetings where applicants come to us trying to, you know, demonstrating what it is they would like to do. And that meeting consists of all key town staff meeting with the applicant and their team, really looking at what it is they wanna do and what are the steps that they need to go through in the town processes to accomplish what they're looking for.
Right.
And that is before they even submit an application.
Okay, so I mean, we can go through all of the incentive features. We have um apartments designed for a handicapped persons, we have rental apartments.
Can we change that language?
You can change whatever you wish to
Yes.
I I
Yeah, we I I this is an old law, so
Yeah.
yes, I agree, we should change, definitely change the language. We have rental apartments. We have um we skipped the A F F H because that's now a requirement, not an incentive.
Correct.
And we have um underground parking, is that even possible?
Yep.
In town, you King Street?
Parking garages, yes.
Dens where?
It it means it means under the building.
Doesn't have to be underground underground, so
Are there, right, I mean
It's underground or underbuilding parking.
Underbuilding, okay.
Again, this is the language that's there today, I tried to make as little changes as possible to keep it consistent. If you wanna change the language, you can.
Um
And then the the numbers six through ten are not being changed, though that is what the percentages in the code today are.
Okay.
And those are very easy to calculate with the exception of not knowing what they're attached to.
Okay, so it it's much more than an exercise in clarification. These are real policy decisions that we have to make and we should make them thoughtfully. I would like to work with uh get the advice of the planning board as well on these changes and um and really think think about it a little bit more.
So one of the the processes that you have to go through to change laws, you do do a referral to the planning board as well as Westchester County with your proposed legislation.
Okay. Okay.
So you should decide, you know, your language changes and, you know, what you would like the incentives to be and then the planning board would review it as part of your referral process. Unless you wanna set a different work session meeting with them, that's your prerogative.
We we might wanna work session meeting with them because we'll have to make a decision, you know, we'll have to make a board decision.
Mm-hmm.
And in order to do that, it might be helpful to get their input. Because after this meeting, we, you know, we'll all go home and think about this, but we'll have to come back together again and have a discussion as to what we all think.
I'm I'm gonna mention a broken word here or some letters. This has nothing to do with, it is nothing involving the evilly, ugly, disgusting, frightening, terrorizing F B C, does it?
No. No, not at all.
Thank you.
But I do wanna be, I don't wanna telegraph something to the community that is contrary to what we're doing here. So I wanna be mindful about the fact that our residents, the majority of them at least, have been pretty consistently vocal about development and increased density.
Mm-hmm.
Um and so I wanna make sure that it's clear that our residents are paying attention, that we're listening. We know that, um we have a duty to serve our voters. The memo, you know, wasn't something that I don't think, I think it caught us all all a little bit by surprise, we didn't know, I didn't know this was gonna be on the agenda. And I don't wanna be in a position where I'm getting calls from residents who are concerned and then not have the answer. So I appreciate your clar- clarification for tonight, but I wanna be mindful also about what we're telegraphing to the community. This isn't us undertaking some development project or anything like that. Um and we're here and we're we're educating ourselves.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, we want appropriate development, we need to bring more vibrancy to to the hamlet. And um I think that taking one application at a time is helpful. I mean, I I would also like to see what these applications would be, I I'm not sure whether I'm thinking whether it would be wise to wait on on these changes and seeing what the applications are.
There will be no applications submitted under this code, they can't get past
So they, okay, so
the door. It that's the problem, there's I can't give them appropriate guidance based on the way the code is written today
Okay.
to 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 take advantage of the incentives.
I understand, okay.
It it also might We need to fix something that's broken and then
So they can't submit an application.
They cannot, no, it wa- it is constitutes an incomplete application.
Okay, I understand. Right, so that's that's a problem.
It also wouldn't be advisable to have an an application in hand and then make changes one way or the other, whether it's pro or 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 against, you know, whether it favors or disfavors that application cuz then there could be an implication that there was a a motive behind it.
No, we definitely don't want that, yeah, I agree. Sabrina, if this if this was written in the nineteen nineties or before, um like why I mean, where have the applications been in all this time? Like why are we just discovering that the language is so confusing that we can't figure out the math of it?
I can't answer that.
Have we ever had
That's a good question.
Have we ever done an application?
I haven't I haven't seen them, no, there's been never been an application that has come in to take advantage of these
I've looked through this.
And during my thirteen plus years here, I have never seen an application come in to apply these incentives.
And then has the has the language of this been confusing before, like for ages?
Yeah, oh, I'm sure it has, I'm sure it has.
Mm.
So to be clear with the, I'm sorry.
I mean I I mean, I, you know, it's it's very confusing to me, I mean, I don't understand it at all. Um so it, I mean, I guess I'm wondering if there's a way for us to, I don't know, look at hypothetical properties in town and figure out what was meant by the existing language so that we can develop better language to reflect the same idea? I mean, do we really have no clue what the
There's one of two ways it can go, but it's it's making judgment calls that I don't think can be made based on the way the code is written.
And there shouldn't be, I mean, if I understand you, you there shouldn't be judgment calls.
Y- yeah, I mean, I why am I deciding this, right?
Yes.
But I I think Jen asks a very good question, I mean, we may not be able to give an example based on what's what it says now, but
I can come up with a sample project for you to see.
Like it shouldn't be based on actual applicants, but if we just look at some properties maybe that exist and use it as a hypothetical, what was meant with the existing language?
I I can't, I can't tell you, I I cannot
I agree, Jen.
That would be really helpful to a lot of people.
I can Yeah, I I can probably come up with a conceptual or a hypothetical project and show you the math and identify why I can't connect the dots.
Mm, that would be helpful.
With the under the existing code and then show you what it would be with the changes and then it will help you measure whether or not an incentive is too high or too low.
I think that would be a helpful exercise.
Oh, yeah, me too.
Yeah, good, that's a good suggestion.
Okay. Um also, it occurs to me um with the minimum front yard requirement, I know that we have some uh legal non-conforming properties that have no front yards, but the setback
Well, we don't have
the current setback is fifty feet.
No, in the B R and B R P, the 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 front yard setback is zero.
Right.
But but I mean, it's within the right of way, it's just after the right of way.
Well, within the language here
This is requiring fifty feet back from that and given the depth and of the properties in the Chapua hamlet, you cannot meet the standard.
But I think to justify
Wait a minute, there's a there's a there's language here, it says delete the minimum front yard in column four, minimum yards from fifty to zero on page three at the very end.
Yes, yeah, this is the chart.
So can you tell me what that what that's referring to?
So the front yard in the M F R C right now, it's not the 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 lot the frontage, it is under minimum yards, the front yard setback. So in our residential zone, you have in the, you know, fifty feet from the street to where your your you could build your building envelope, right?
Mm-hmm.
In the hamlet, your I think your front yard is zero or where available thirty, I'd have to go back to the actual code, I don't know if you have it in your paperwork. Um but so if you look at what this is requiring in the M F R C, which only can be within the B R and B R P, fifty feet puts you in the middle of those properties.
Right, okay.
So it defeats the purpose of an incentive, otherwise you're gonna have a really skinny building that has only two units.
Okay. Alright, but maybe shouldn't be zero, but we can
Right, that's what I was gonna say.
Right, well
Maybe there's we can talk about that.
To Jen's point about
Yeah.
how that would look, give us an example, maybe we don't want fifty, but maybe we don't want zero either.
Mm-hmm. Practicality. Right.
You may want ten.
Right.
Right. Okay. So we're not ready at all to schedule a public hearing for this. Um I think the next step should be to ask the planning board, maybe if they might, if they would think
I think the next step is for me to give you a sample of a hypothetical.
Agree.
Cuz because the planning board, the the to to send
Well, okay.
You have to decide whether or not with that hypothetical, you feel comfortable proposing certain things or are there specific questions that you want the planning board to weigh in on?
Well, I think so we'll get them from you soon, but our next meeting will be after the spring break. So that's that's a long time, so I think we should schedule a meeting with the planning board. In the meantime, we'll have time to to receive that from you and and then we can schedule a meeting with them.
I mean after spring break.
For after spring break, right.
Well, they meet at obviously weeks that you do, so
O- o- otherwise, a lot of, you know, a lot of time will have gone by.
So maybe into May?
Work session?
So our next meeting will be on April twenty second. Then we have a a meeting on April twenty ninth.
We do.
But the the me- yes, that's the
Oh, that's right.
a dedicated meeting for uh Verizon
Oh.
to come in and talk about cell service for anyone interested.
That's right.
That's the twenty nine.
Since it's an off night for the planning board, I'd like to give them a little bit of notice for them to come in.
Right, that that's why I'm saying you should we should tell them
And I need some time to come up with your hypothetical, you know, to all your presentations.
We should tell them right away so that they can see if they can schedule that, that will help.
Right, so maybe you wanna go into May?
Like the thirteenth?
Oh, you're saying the twenty second is too soon?
Uh y- you need me to come up with some schematics and whatnot for you to react to.
I got the rules.
Yeah.
I I don't, not gonna have enough time for the twenty second.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
So should we say May, May sixth?
I'm on two. We don't meet the sixth.
May sixth is in the meeting.
The thirteenth.
That's the the thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. And you want that to be at seven P M for joint meeting?
Um, yep, that sounds good. Does anyone have any other questions on this? No.
Okay.
Okay, thank you Sabrina.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Um if if there are people who are here um to discuss this, this is a work session. Um so we don't take public comment during work session, but we'll we'll have public comment very shortly, so please stay
Questions.
and and you're free to ask your questions at that time. Okay.
It I would also just like to request the context a- around the this as well. Yes, that too. Like some things you said were like they're referenced, referenced here is defined here. I if possible
I'm gonna give you the whole code.
Perfect.
Yeah, no, the the next go around in preparation of your joint meeting, I'll provide the whole s- the whole code section
Okay.
so you can understand the circular referencing that needs to happen and you can understand the different provisions within the code. And because this is just a portion of that code.
Yeah, I feel like I was missing a lot of context um to understand what I was looking at.
Okay, and we we have to a lot of questions Sabrina, but I just wanna say thank you for working on this.
Okay, thanks.
No, it's good.
I know that, you know, the language is a problem, so it's important to to do this right.
Okay.
No worries, happy to
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, now we're going to go through some administrative items, raw. Um go ahead.
Okay, we have retroactive payment claims dated March twenty fifth. Uh we have authorization to use town property, uh ready to peddle. Um this is a a class they teach uh kids how to ride bikes. Um they've done it in the past, they've requested to use town property again. Uh similarly, Camp Abbey is requesting to use the train station parking lot for a drop-off and pickup. Um they've used that in the past as well. Um we have authorization to approve the youth officer I M A with the county. Uh we get a reimbursement of about forty seven hundred dollars from the county for that. Um we have the authorization to enter into a contract with NYSERDA for the clean energy projects um in the package, we have detailed about two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant award from NYSERDA that covers E V charging stations, uh installation of a heat pump at the art center, purchase of uh N E V and some electric landscaping equipment. Uh we have authorization to extend the bid contract for D P W uh with THAL Industries. These are uh highway maintenance materials. And Jeremy, we have an authorization to accept our auction bid results And Jeremy, we have an authorization to accept our auction bid results for asphalt millings uh an entire twenty five dollars.
He adds up.
Okay, any questions?
I had no idea this was a special thing for you, Jeremy.
Yeah, it was like, yeah, it was it was dormant and I think we must have three hundred thousand dollars, right?
Yeah, he Jeremy's always like to track the auctions, usually they're get a little bit more money.
Just a thing, alright, darling. What do you said asphalt milling?
Um so once they um when they're replacing roadwork, when they kind of grind up the top surface of the road, millings and um I guess there's an aftermarket for it for twenty five.
So it's like this crap from the, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
From the road.
Yeah.
I usually it's a vehicle, that's why I always.
Asphalt truck.
No, usually it's a vehicle that we auction, yes, correct. Any other questions?
Questions?
No.
No, we're all set, so okay.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you very much, so at this time I'd like to ask for motion to adjourn the work session and convene the town board meeting.
So moved.
So.
Good night, folks.
Good night.
Good night, Sabrina.
Okay, good night Sabrina, thank you, okay, all in favor?
Thank you. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are now officially at our town board meeting. Uh Rob, any announcements?
Nope, no announcements.
No announcements, okay, I will hold my supervisor's report for the town newsletter coming out on Thursday. Um any anything for the administrators report?
Yep, I just have a couple things for the administrators report. Um uh happy to report the fields are now open as of last weekend. Unfortunately, weather wasn't so cooperative, hopefully it will be going forward, but our fields are open including uh Back Againny. Um I just wanna remind everyone that the uh military tribute banners uh we're still accepting applications for those for this year. Um those open on April first, they close on April fifteenth. Uh I think there's a link on the website if anyone is interested or you can contact Lauren, uh she'll give you any further information. And uh I wanted to uh just point out that we have started our work on Shether Road, the reconstruction of that road after uh after we had a washout on the side of that due to Hurricane one of the eyes, either Idaho or Isaias, but one of those. Um they've been doing work out there now for a week or two. Uh next week I think that road is slated to close for several weeks after that, so we will send out a NICS old notifying residents of that and uh we will have the electric signboards posted to uh remind everyone.
Okay, alright, thank you, Rob. Um and next on the agenda, we have a proclamation for Arab American Heritage Month. Um the board had determined that we would uh recognize uh cultural heritage months recognized by the federal government. We've done a few in the past, we um last year we started in um in May, I believe, we had um Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, we had Jewish American Heritage Month. And I know that in the past prior to the time I was on the board, Jeremy, you might remember we did um the board recognized uh indigenous peoples month or I believe it was a month. I'm not exactly sure what the board did at that time, but I know that um resolution was was passed.
We recognized Italian American Heritage Month, I know we did that one.
We did that one too. Okay, so we are very proud to um honor Ar- Arab American Heritage Month in this month of April and I will read the resolution and I think instead of waiting to read over the the resolutions, at the end we could vote on this at this time.
Sure.
Okay, um so whereas in twenty twenty one, President Joe Biden became the first U S president to officially recognize the month of April as Arab American Heritage Month and whereas the town of Newcastle values and celebrates the diversity of cultures and heritages that contribute to the strength and vibrancy of our community and whereas in the month of April, we celebrate the rich history, culture and heritage of Ha- Arab Americans and acknowledge the many contributions to the cultural diversity and economic vitality that enrich American life. And whereas for over a century, Arab Americans have made significant and lasting contributions to American society in fields such as medicine, law, business, education, technology, public service and the arts. And whereas thousands of Arab Americans have served honorably and with distinction in the United States Armed Forces, demonstrating their unwavering commitment to our country. And whereas Arab Americans have shared their diverse traditions and cultural practices with neighbors and communities, fostering mutual understanding and enriching the American cultural landscape. And whereas Arab Americans have faced civil rights challenges and harmful stereotyping, which must be addressed through education, community engagement and a commitment to equity and justice. And whereas Arab Americans join all Americans in striving for a peaceful inclusive society in which every individual is treated with dignity and respect. And whereas the town of Newcastle is honored to count Arab Americans among its population and proudly recognizes their significant contributions both within our town and across the nation. Now therefore being resolved that the Newcastle Town Board hereby proclaims the month of April as Arab American Heritage Month in the town of Newcastle and encourages all residents to learn more about the history, culture and contributions of Arab Americans and to celebrate the rich diversity that strengthens our community and our nation. Okay, and so now I would like to ask for motion to approve this resolution proclaiming April as Arab American Heritage Month in the town of Newcastle.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. That was very nice. Alright, um. Okay, next on the agenda is um a public comment period. So anyone with public comment, please feel free to come up to the microphone and um welcome.
Hi everybody, my name is Cynthia Sheamus and I'm here tonight representing Belonging Newcastle. Uh Belonging Newcastle is an independent grassroots organization focused on providing a voice and representation for all residents of Newcastle, especially those who've been marginalized, dismissed and disenfranchised. We are not afraid to stand up for diversity, equity and inclusion. Our hundred eighty members come from every walk of life and every racial, religious and socioeconomic background. We've formed a coalition around our shared set of beliefs in fairness, compassion and courage. We share a specific focus on advocating for and protecting the rights of everyone, regardless of their race, color, religion, gender or sexuality, abilities or socioeconomic position, to be heard, included, respected and safe. We all deserve to belong. Our mission is to give our community members an inspiring, collaborative, results-oriented way to engage and to turn their values into relevant action that makes a difference in our town. Our goal is for our members to take simple, powerful, coordinated actions, weighing in at critical moments when our values or rights are at stake and where we can make a difference. That's why we are creating Belonging Newcastle. This organization is not just about making statements, it's about making change. Over the coming months, we will work to create community-oriented programming and resources with subject matter experts. We'll work to develop new proposals for public policies or projects and we will focus on connecting with and helping to inspire other local residents whose unanswered concerns may have made them feel like they do not belong. A few members of our hundred eighty person citizen group are here with me tonight to introduce Belonging Newcastle to all of you. And we ask you, the town board, to partner with us and support us in our mission to foster true belonging in our community. We look forward to community cooperatively working with you to help create a better and more inclusive Newcastle for all of us residents, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, please come on.
Mine is more pedestrian.
Welcome.
Uh hi, I'm Suzanne Chason and I first of all really here just to talk about the code that Sabrina was talking about and first of all say I appreciate that you guys are asking good questions, that you're slowing down and that you're saying that this is confusing, you don't understand it yet because it's confusing and I don't understand it yet. But I wanna just say a couple things, first of all, I'm a little concerned because the only map I can find online shows that there's a very small um uh multifamily residential district, much smaller than they seem to be talking about. So I don't know if this is not correct, but the business development district and the multifamily district are not identical and the overlay zone they're talking about, I'm not sure either, so I would really like some clarification on that. Um the other thing is, I keep hearing about how there are no plans, no one's come out to try to do anything with this possible new zoning changes. But if you go back to the March fourth planning board meeting online, just go look at that and you'll see that there is a current King Street property owner at two eleven King Street. He's a well-known person in town, very politically active, owns more than one property and he has already submitted a concept plan for a multifamily project at King Street. This property currently is a two-family, five-bedroom house on one-third of an acre and it's currently setback from the sidewalk pretty far, under large specimen trees, fine, no problem. What he wants to do is knock it down, build two two-family buildings for a total of four units that would extend to within three feet of the sidewalk. And this is what he's looking for and I don't think he's looking for a zoning change, I think he's looking for this law. Um and he wants to eliminate everything, eliminate the specimen trees. Um and if you look at it, he would be doing all this damage to take one two-family, five-bedroom unit and turn it into two two-family unit for a total of eight bedrooms, so you're going from five bedrooms to eight bedrooms, but you're doing an enormous amount of damage. Plus, because it's only a third of an acre and the current zoning, as I understand, says you can't do this unless you have at least an acre. So he's going down one-third to the size and trying to apply the same laws and there are at least eight other properties up and down King Street that if he gets this, they get this. You can't say, hey, you did it with a third of an acre, oh, you have half an acre, you can't do it? Of course you can, so the problem is, and he by the way owns more than one piece of property, so guess what? It's not gonna be one piece. So my concern is, I I I'm no problem, you know, you think of me as like anti, you know, multifamily housing, I am not. I am in favor of a multifamily housing, what I am against is the zoning changes that take away the sense of trees, the small houses, the setbacks, the green space. And when you drive down King Street, that's what you feel. And one of the things that started me to be politically active was when the street state came along and they took all the big trees down, they took that beautiful canopy that defined King Street and Chapua and they eradicated it and they turned it into a concrete slab. And now my fear is with this law and I know Sabrina's saying, oh, there's no properties out there that that's just already applying to, not true. Okay, that's just categorically not true. The intention is to take all these properties, at least eight of them, put them right up to the sidewalk, build them doubly dense and eradicate those trees and it will completely change the hill. Plus, as I said, I'm not actually sure from looking at the map that this is even in the multifamily residential district. So I'm really unclear because this um March fourth planning board meeting um claims that i- i- in not just he, but the developer, the concept plan was filed and said it was in the multifamily residential district, the person speaking said it was in, and yet my maps say it's not.
Where where is this property, Suzanne?
It's two eleven King Street. So it's um if you were picturing it, um it's like a gray building near, you know King Street Salon? It's like the building next to it, it's kind of a, it's a house, kind of goes up a little bit and it's pretty far back and there's some big specimen trees, you can go on Google Maps right now, you will recognize the gray way.
Is that the one that was sold recently?
I'm sorry?
Is that the one that was sold recently?
No.
Oh.
It is owned by you, yes, and I'm not gonna say.
Thank you.
Um but it's it's a it's a it's just a house and it's two families, got big trees in front. He owns a property across the way, also really nice property, three-quarters of an acre. They're not gonna have, and it's got beautiful green space and trees. And now I will say that along King Street, some of the properties do go right up to the sidewalk, their grandfather that way. But if you notice, many of those properties that go right up to the sidewalk have a lot of green space behind them. So you're still not getting that density that you're gonna get. So I do appreciate that the that the board is gonna take this slowly and understand that there really, it's not just a why are we doing this now, oh, I don't know, I think this is a good idea. We're doing this now because there are developers who have been itching for this for a very long time and they're gonna try to find any way they can to do this. I'm not against the development, but I'm against the changes that this would bring. You wanna change your setback from fifty to twenty, okay, you wanna change it from fifty to zero, I don't think so. So that's my point, thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, anyone else for public comment? Um. You know, so I'm just going to say um regarding the prior speaker, that the town board most definitely uh values um inclusion and you know, hearing from people on their different perspectives and what they experience in town. Uh we hope to um foster a sense of unity and belonging in our town. We have a committee on inclusion and belonging where we recognize all people and all cultures, all faiths and um recognize that every single last one of us is deserving of respect, regardless of our race, ethnicity, religion, identity, every single last one of us. You know, there is no monopoly on this by anyone. And it's also not a zero-sum game. I know that some have argued that if we look out for certain groups, that means we don't care about others. I I have never understood that argument, it's not it's not a zero-sum game, it's not a pie. We have an infinite capacity for compassion and understanding. And that's what we expect, that's what we ask of all of our residents. And if the entire world were to recognize that, I think we would be in a wonderful place. Um I'm very proud of our committee on inclusion and belonging and they have done a lot of out, well, they're beginning to do different kinds of outreach and some of you will hear from them and eventually hopefully, you know, we'll have, we'll go from small gatherings to larger gatherings. Um it it's sometimes difficult to predict when you are planning for meaningful connection. And and that's what our committee is working on, they are working slowly. No one is here to make uh grand statements or any kind of grandstanding from our committee. They are working very hard in the background to bring about mutual trust and mutual understanding and empathy and true authentic connection, so we are very proud of the work that they're doing. And uh you know, we encourage you to be supportive of them when you encounter their efforts and we'll be hearing more from them, I don't like to get ahead of our committees, but I just wanna say that I greatly respect the work of our committee on inclusion and belonging. Um and that's all I'd like to say about that, if anyone wants to add anything. I welcome too.
I'll just second what what you've just articulated, I I agree. Um I'm very proud of the work the the Newcastle Committee on Inclusion and Belonging, just to articulate the the name of the committee, just to be clear about that. The work they've been doing, um they've been doing slow and steady work, uh they've been vetting their work, being very thoughtful about it, doing a lot of research, getting training. Um so again, I just wanna reiterate, um if you do hear from the Newcastle Committee, um I just want to encourage residents to feel comfortable in responding and being open to the programming that they're bringing forth.
Yeah, and I do regret that the um people who are here and the speaker left right after they spoke. It would have been really nice for them to hear what we had to say considering that we do have a town committee on inclusion and belonging, so I really regret that um they spoke and they left immediately.
And it's not to, it's not to say, Vicky, that another, you know, organized group in town,
Wi- without listening.
you know, a set of citizens can't do, you know, work out there, um it's just distinct from what the town is doing.
Yeah, I mean we welcome people of of goodwill and good faith uh who want to who want to do this work. So that is always welcome.
And there are a lot of community-oriented projects, proposals, education sponsored by the town.
Okay.
There's ample opportunity for residents. If there if if inclusion and belonging or cultural events are important, there's ample opportunity. We're we're here, we'd love to hear from you. Um so to suggest otherwise would be wrong.
Oh, okay, we have another comment, um welcome.
Hi, my name's Anne Angwitz, I just wanted to thank the town board and the town for what they're attempting to do and it's very much appreciated by the residents here. I'm not sure why some feel a need to do a separate private inclusion group. To me, that's sort of an eye. To me, that's sort of an ironic use of the term. Um I do wanna say that I have felt in this town um a certain level of vitriol and pushback and people unwilling to listen recently. I think it's been noted not just in our town, but by people considering whether or not to move to this town. I've lived here since nineteen ninety-two or three and I've never seen it like this. Um there are public or semi-public forums where people are accused of hate speech or of all kinds of things where they're merely stating a different point of view. I think that's really a shame. I think Chapua should be known as a community where we all listen to one another even when we don't agree. Sometimes we can agree to disagree. I think we should be an open place for people of all races, all religions, all backgrounds. But that doesn't mean we need to be divisive um and set up our own little separate camps. I think we're all people from Newcastle. I think we're all Americans and we should be proud to all be together. That's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh would anyone like, anyone else like to come and make a public comment? No? Okay. Alright, so we will close this public comment period. Thank you to everyone who spoke.
Did you wanna check if anyone was online?
Uh yes, okay. Anyone online for public comment?
Okay.
Okay, so we'll close the public comment period. Okay, thank you, everybody. So now, um we will get to our consent agenda. Okay, thanks for coming, everyone. Um, Rob, do you wanna go over the consent agenda?
Sure.
Uh consent agenda, most of these were administrative items. Uh we have the two authorizations to use town property, they're ready to peddle. And uh Camp Abbey, we have the authorization to approve the youth officer I M A. Uh the authorization to enter into contract with NYSERDA for the clean energy projects. The authorization to extend the bid contract uh with THAL Industries for uh highway maintenance materials. And we have the authorization to accept the auction bid results for asphalt millings.
Okay, thanks, Rob. Alright, so let's um let's get started. We're ready for our resolutions.
Kick it off, Holly. The audience is gone.
I know, what happened?
Just when it gets good.
I know, it never happens. Why did we not get?
I move to adopt the items one through six as listed on the consent agenda. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of five hundred and eight thousand sixty-one dollars and ninety-six cents listed on the summary A P check register and detail voucher detail report, both dated March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, Holly.
I move to authorize the posting and hiring for the position of recreation assistant within the Recreation and Parks Department at the annual salary ranging from fifty-two thousand five hundred twenty-eight dollars and fourteen cents to seventeen seventy-two thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I move to authorize the appointment of the following individuals to the Arts and Culture commiti- committee for two-year term effective February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Lori Hoffman, Roberta Lasky, Lisa Nissman and Carolyn Simpson.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
I move to authorize the hiring of Benjamin Millerman for the position of student intern within the town clerk's office for a total stipend of two thousand dollars for a period of six weeks effective May fifth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jen, you wanna take the last one?
Sure.
Spread it out.
I really want to leave everyone's names or just?
These students listed.
Okay. I move to authorize the hiring of the following individuals as recreation attendants within the Recreation and Parks Department to serve as twenty twenty-five summer camp staff effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Names listed below.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now I have motion to adjourn meeting.
So moved.
Second.